Council meeting started on time.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Everyone saw everything from our clerk of council, Mr. G and his perfect aide. I'll tell you, you guys have been doing a heck of a job. Thank you.
I don't know about that, but just pseudo clerk, I guess you could say.
You're doing really good. Don't, don't.
Doing the bare minimum.
So tonight we have three council minutes, three different meetings. I will be offering them with Jessica's the second. And you notice that there was an amendment to one. We don't have to amend it because we got it before the meeting. It was to include me in there. Well, he changed it from individual names to everybody. So he kind of, he forgot about me, but that's okay. I'm okay with that. We don't really have any public comments or correspondence. I didn't get anything, Mark. I keep looking. So every day. Bunch of advertisements is what comes in that mailbox most of the time. So the first one up tonight is the one that Mr. Garvis offered last time. Ordinance fifteen about our snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles and all-purpose vehicles. As I said, I've received zero correspondence to the clerk's mailbox. I've also personally haven't received any. I don't know if anybody did on council.
No.
Okay. Suggestion stills because we're changing something. We just do second reading to give the public an opportunity. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to hear some voices because.
I'm okay.
Council. Is there a way I can change my picture to see only the council members?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You might be able to.
If you go to the three dots at the top of the screen, to the left of the camera picture, go to, it's more actions. If you go to large gallery, that might help you out. It might put more people on your screen. I just did that and it brings up more people and more video.
Yeah, I've got. I'm not gonna worry about that. Okay, so Mr. Garvis, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then because it is a second reading, we need a second. And that had been assigned to Vinnie. So Mr. Ventura, you'll be our second on the second.
Got it. Thank you.
It's not the second of the month, but it's the second. Okay, then we come into the new legislation. The first one up is for the budget. Since Mr. Garvis is the budget chair, he'll, if you notice, Mark and I spoke in advance, instead of sending out an email, we just put it on your agenda of who's got what. And that way, it's already decided. It's just easier than sending an email and then you have to come back and do it. So Jeff will do this one. I'll be the second and we'll give it over to Mr. Veras to explain the changes. And all of you personally received the color version of this. Some guy in some big truck came around to do.
Some personal delivery guy, yeah.
Was that you personally, John? Pardon me? Was it you personally?
Yes.
I thought it was. Okay.
You missed a truck?
There was debate between my wife and I as to who actually handed her the paperwork. I said it had to be you.
Well, she told me to drop it on the ground where I was, so there was no handing going on.
She's a, she's a little bit careful about the whole pandemic and she didn't recognize you. She had no idea who you were.
That's how I like it. So there's a few changes. To the revenue, I added forty thousand for unused money from a 2020 PO, mainly the road program. Additional forty thousand when we close out that PO. There's a project that sewer district, community cost share, twenty-five thousand dollar project that we added. So that reimbursement was added to the resources. And activity with a land bank property. The potential sale is five hundred thousand dollars higher than we anticipated in the budget. On the appropriation side, we added money for road salt to three different funds to allow us to buy our minimum that we have to buy. Added that thirty-five thousand that you are all aware of with the North Freeway Drive emergency repairs. And that twenty-five thousand dollar community cost share project. And adjusted the 2021 road program, additional forty-two thousand to meet the engineer's estimate. And that's everything on the amendment.
Questions?
Is this community cost share project something we've already done or?
It's in the process of being completed.
So can you tell us what the project was, is?
I could let the mayor or Joe tell. I know what it is, but I'm not the expert at it, so.
All right. Mr. Gelati?
Yeah, John, Joe here. I believe this is the annual Ohio EPA compliance.
No, it's not, Joe, it's not.
Oh, I apologize.
It's the.
I believe this is the, this is the project. It's an attempt to remediate or alleviate a sewer infiltration into the regional stormwater system.
Yeah, that's it.
This is on Berkshire?
Is it Crow?
Crow in Berkshire? That's what this, okay. And it's only, it's just a portion of the, of the money? So is it a half of it or a quarter of it?
I think it's all of it. Right, Joe?
Yeah, I believe that it's all of it, John V., yes.
And does that mean we'll no longer see the truck every time it rains?
I wish I could guarantee that.
It's just to figure out why the truck needs to be there.
Well, it's only taken them.
It's to widen the road so the truck has a place to park.
To fuel the truck.
Yes, to give them their own side parking lot. It's been over fifteen years that they show up all the time. In fact, it might be even longer than that. I'll have to ask the previous owner. Okay, any other questions?
I don't remember if you said this or not. Are we doing first reading or one, two, three?
One, two, three, if you can.
The other thing is for the road program for North Freeway, that was an emergency. And it's under the dollar amount that must be approved by council before any expenditure. So when the mayor called me and said, you're under the dollar amount. If we hit forty or more, it would have had to come to council before. They could even spend one penny. So that's why it didn't come to you first. Fifty-nine. We may go back and lower that. So any other questions?
As far, as far as these money changes, have we decided whether or not we were going to be able to do the extra part of the recreation center cost-wise to extend the handicap parking?
The cost has not come in yet, Vinnie.
Yeah, that's only up for bid.
Okay.
We just approved that for bid, so I don't think that's come back yet.
All right.
Yeah, that's correct, Ms. Tully. Those bids, that bid will be on April second.
Is that Good Friday?
It's not April Fool's Day. That's good.
Well, it's Good Friday, Joe.
Yeah, I had my choice between April Fool's Day and Good Friday. I didn't want to fool anybody.
Right in between, so. And at some point, Mr. Garvis, we need to host a budget meeting. So we can talk about where we are this year and start looking at next year.
I had that thought earlier this week myself.
Yes, so we don't get into last minute, oh my goodness. Now we're gonna try, because our intent is always to have something in place and passed before the end of the year and not go on with the temporary budget. We could do a temporary budget. It's only good till the end of March. The problem with that is it's just a lot of paperwork for no reason if we can spend the time. All right, do I hear any other discussion? If not, we'll do one, two, three, so we can move the money around and take the money that's coming in.
Yeah, and I think we have a, we have a deadline on purchasing the road salt anyways, so one, two, three would be appreciated.
I would not say that. It's seventy out.
I know, but we still have to buy it.
Now we're gonna need it.
We still have to buy it by a certain day to meet the contract.
Okay, number nineteen, this is for the insurance. Who wants to talk about this? Is it John or is it Annette?
I think the mayor wanted to take this one.
I, I would like that, thank you. So this is the second of a three-year contract. There's actually a typo I think needs to be adjusted. Correctness for Godetti?
Yes, sir, just only in the title of the ordinance, it's correct in the body. From first year of a three-year contract, the change would be to the second year of a three-year contract.
We had an increase. We're in a pool for insurance, given the extraordinary number of claims that were on there. The insurance did go up a little bit, but the service that we've had with them has been good. And again, this is the second of three years with that, so this is just for the increase that we have to add to it. Mr. Veras, it was what, how much was the total of that increase?
Questions?
Roughly twenty thousand.
Anyone have any other questions for this? And so this is.
Is it annually or one time?
Annual.
I'm sorry, what?
You'll have another one next year.
Will we have another one next year since this is only the first year of a three-year?
Second.
The second of three years.
If we do this, Mark, is it good for all three years or only one year?
So you did one last year for the first year. You're doing one this year for the second year and you'll probably do one for the last year.
So we have to amend the title of this.
Correct.
Mr. Finley, this is yours. Lucky you.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, and then Mr. Garvis is your second. If I don't hear any objections, we'll do one, two, three and adopt. Everybody okay with that?
I would appreciate it because the policy period starts April first. No full one.
I'm good.
Okay.
And that's why this is an emergency one as well.
Moving along to number twenty. This one will be because Abby Sitz Parks, it's Jessica. Jason, would you like to explain what we're ditching? Jason?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to unmute here. Can you, can you, are we, are we, we're looking at the disposal, is that correct? Because you said ditching and I know we have some outside work going on too. You're talking disposal.
Ditching of equipment.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify, because we got a little bit of both going on. We have one of our old octane seeded ellipticals that has run the course of its life. We have been told by the maintenance repair guy, it is no longer up to par to get repaired. And unfortunately, with hitting that, we can no longer auction it off to that effect. So we are going to seek permission to dispose of this piece of equipment. So that way we can get it out of the facility and disposed of properly.
And you can't ride it home, guys, if you buy it. It does, doesn't work. Any questions on that? Do you have any anticipation of how much money you'll get for it?
We won't get any because we're just disposing of it.
Oh, you ditched it?
Yeah, it's, it's no longer usable.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, hearing them, we could do one, two, three and adopt. Since it can't be used anyhow, I don't think there's a way to resurrect it.
Right, sounds good.
Okay, Mark, did you want to talk about the next one?
Right, so this is the late entry, so to speak. There need to be a motion to waive the forty-eight hour rule and add it to the agenda if council so desired. This is the second to last CBA, successor CBA to be negotiated for the next three years that the city has. This particular one is with the dispatchers. Council can see the tentative agreement that was negotiated between the city's attorney and the OPBA's attorneys. It's primarily just, the, the main part of it is the financials, the wage increase and the insurance. There's a couple additional items as council saw in the packet. The exhibit to the ordinance is the actual redline CBA, so similar to the IAFF and the prior two OPBA contracts for the sergeants and patrol. The proposition is for council to approve the dispatcher CBA contract tonight.
So everyone understands it's for the dispatchers, if you don't know. And this is to get their contract done. There, if you noticed, if you read the attachment, you see an increase in the, in the wage caps between low and high. And I appreciate that when the attachment was sent, it had it highlighted so you could real quick figure out what the heck had changed. So any questions? And this is number twenty-one, correct?
That is twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one.
Just to confuse us, huh?
Great.
Any questions for Mark?
Mark, just a real one, when we have to go back and retroactively catch up, does that mean we have to go and make a budget adjustment?
Mr. Veras would be the individual to answer that one.
No, Jeff.
Okay.
It's considered at the beginning of the year in the original bud, budget.
Oh, okay, makes sense. Thank you, sure.
Good question. Anybody else? Chief, do you have anything to say? Either chief.
Nothing to add.
Okay, if I don't hear any objections, I would like to add it to the agenda by waiving the forty-eight hour rule and then offer for one, two, three and adopt it. It's always nice to see when we're able to get to that point, whenever you have contract negotiations or any negotiation part of the contract. If I hear any objections or is that okay?
I'm ready.
Okay, Dave, you're gonna be my second. I just want to make you add it, waive it and all that other rigmarole. Okay, then the only other piece of possible legislation is we had discussed briefly about canceling the April eighth meeting due to being a holiday week and spring break. Does anyone have any objection to doing that? If for some reason, and Mark and I have talked about this, there's something that is a must to do. We can always call an emergency meeting. But at this point in time, there doesn't appear to be anything looming on the horizon when Mark and I spoke. So what's your pleasure?
I'm okay with that.
Yep, me too.
Mr. Garvis?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said I, I have no problem with it.
Aye, aye. Okay. All right, in that situation, then for the, when it comes to other motions and legislative action, Mr. Ventura, if you could make that motion.
Okay.
And then Jessica, if you could be the second. And then we can pass that. Again, if for some reason we have an emergency meeting, Mark explained to them how long we need before calling an emergency meeting.
For a special meeting, it can be accomplished upon twelve hours' notice to the council members, if you really had to meet quickly. The general rule is forty-eight hours, obviously, for regular meetings. You just have to be careful when there's a special meeting that the explicit purpose is set forth in the notice that goes out to the media and everybody.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, then the last item of business we'll have is to go into executive session. We've already talked about that. It'll be council only to discuss our next steps regarding. And, and I'll make the motion. I'm just gonna read it the way Mark wrote it, so I don't make a mistake and get us in any legal trouble. Okay, um, questions or concerns that anybody has? Anything they want to bring up? I did look, just so you know, I'm gonna go on and send this to everybody. It came from the Summit Colony, Ms. Shapiro's office about the pandemic unemployment assistance. And I'm gonna send it to you in case you get questions from any residents regarding it. It talks about the guidance. If you've got COVID, don't have COVID and unemployment and the three hundred dollar payments that were to be generated. So my recommendation is you can read this and have it as your backup. But then I would say, suggest that you refer them to Ms. Shapiro's office, because they have someone handling this. Is that okay, Mark?
Yep. And.
Let, let them get into the nitty-gritty. That's their role.
Ms. Tully, did you want me to mention that email all of council receives a copy of regarding the herbicide spraying?
Yes.
So just very briefly, so council's aware, I did reach out to that resident and asked that he contact me if he so desired. The gist of it, so everybody's aware, is that one of the state utility entities came in and sprayed some pesticides down and sounds like caused some damage potentially to the resident's property. I have not heard back from the resident. If I do, I'll keep council updated though.
They figured we, Mark, can you real briefly give them that high level you told me about may or may not be our issue?
Yeah, there's really, it doesn't sound like there's any involvement that the city would have in it. I think the regulation that the resident seeking would be, I guess, highly unusual, to put it lightly. It's likely a private issue between the property owner and the company that came in and put down the pesticides and caused the damage. So it's really not something for the city to be involved in, but I offered, if you wanted to go over the facts with me, I'd, you know, certainly be happy to listen to him and make sure it's nothing the city would be involved with.
And as we all know, we have numerous power lines and towers within the city. Mark and I spoke about the fact there was a, you know, an easement, whenever there's that there, there's also the easement for the gas line just down my street. People have located items on those easements. So I don't know if it's a door you want to open. Because you don't know what the company could say to you about your shed, your pool. You know, there's, there's all kinds of things next to poles out there. So we're gonna let Mark handle that, so that he can give them the appropriate direction in case we hear back. Anything else, Mark?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to bring up for the general group?
Mrs. Tully, a discussion we had on Monday regarding the Guadalupe Catch Basin and the complaint that you and I talked about from the resident on Berkshire. Are we getting anything back from, from the engineer on that?
John, John hears about it from me every time I turn around, so. And Mark is also aware, but.
Right.
Talk about it. This is the one where we talked about the fact that bushes seem to have disappeared or died. The other thing is, are they ever gonna come and take out the trees that they took down? Those are still laying all over. And there's erosion happening from what had, was created. But I think morsels, we never came back and took the trees out. And it's taken, because of the erosion, more trees going down, bushes gone. There's a problem. Is the, is it done? Or is there still work to be done on the retention basis?
Ms. Tully, it's Joe here. I, I guess, yeah, first of all, the, the trees were removed from the site last fall. And I'm not aware of any other concerns that have been brought forward. If the resident has a concern, they could certainly reach out to me with a location. I'd be more than happy to, to check it out.
Mr. Gigliardi, they were also concerned about a sight line where this is no, this is no longer, for better, a better lack of, a better word of, it's, it's not hidden from their view now. It's just wide open. And they're wondering if that, the completion upon that, if there's gonna be any more, anything planted in there to alleviate an open sight line so that they're not staring at that and that they can have some of the, the vegetation that was removed back up in there somehow.
Yeah, Mr. Ventura, if whoever the resident might be that has that concern, I, I guess I would ask, you know, they could reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to, to look at it, discuss it with them, you know, this is.
If you'd like, I can send you a picture of what it looks like now versus what it looked like five years ago. Because all the bushes are gone. Everything that was along the top from where the pipe was put in all the way down. So, I mean, it's all gone. The other thing I think we have a concern is, is there gonna be a fence put around that?
Yes, there is a fence. Or there will be a fence, yes.
There are. There are people going up to check it out and they're younger. So my fear is who may be playing or goofing around there. We've had, the neighbor has had the discussion with them once about this isn't a play zone. I don't know if there's a fence around the one at Ledgeview. I don't remember seeing one. But my concern is they're off investigating it, shall we say.
Yeah, no, the Ledgeview does not have a fence, but our project will have a fence, so when it's completed, for exactly that purpose. So that mostly younger people don't get in there.
Yep, they're, they, it's, we see them all the time, so we go out and say things. Because my fear is just something happening to somebody. And also some of the things they're doing, I don't want them to have an issue with destroying part of it after what's been spent, so. Okay, anything else? Lost my clock up there. We only have two minutes. If anyone needs it real quick.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome to the March twenty-fifth council meeting. It is seven-thirty PM. Will Mr. Godetti please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do I have a motion for approval of minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, March ninth, the special council meeting. Thursday, March eleventh, the regular council meeting. And Monday, March fifteenth, a special council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Mr. Godetti, do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not, sir.
Do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, sir.
Okay, well, we've been pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance fifteen, twenty-twenty-one for its second reading by title only.
Second. In ordinance amending section seven, three, seven, five, zero, three of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to the operation of snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles and all-purpose vehicles.
Keith Holden, can you touch on this for a moment, please? Keith Golden, can you touch on this for a moment, please?
Yes, the law department made a minor adjustment to the ordinance to make it a little more efficient for the police department, minor change, so it shouldn't affect too many things.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance number 18.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 182021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
In ordinance amending ordinance number 742020 relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Macedonia for the period of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
Director Vares?
Thank you, Mayor. As this discussed at caucus, there's a few changes to the estimated resources. Forty thousand is being added from 2020 POs that had extra money on them when we closed it. There's a sewer district project, $25,000 that we are getting reimbursed from the community cost share program. And an estimate on land bank sale, we're adding a half million dollars to that. On the appropriation side, there's increases for road salt purchases because we have to meet our minimum by contract to purchase. Hopefully, we can buy it and just store it and not have to use it. We're adding $35,000 for the North Freeway Drive emergency repairs that were completed. Adding the project, the, the community cost share project and adjusting the engineer's bid for the 2021 road program. That goes out either this Friday or next Friday.
And just to be clear, council, I emailed all of you about the incident we had on North Freeway Drive. We had the road, I, I hate to say blow up, but it blew up in a bunch of spots to the point where I contemplated closing the road. I assimilated that to looking like a blown up road in Iraq. That's how bad it was. So we had to do an emergency repair there. That's part of what these appropriations are for. If there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer that. But basically, it was a severe safety issue that we needed to address immediately. Thankfully, with the help of the engineering department and the service department, we were able to get that taken care of very quickly and have it rectified so that no one had any problems on that road. So that is now complete. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Uh, I move to adopt ordinance 182021 and post the same according to law.
Second.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 18 carries. Ordinance number 19.
I move to offer ordinance number 192021 for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the contract with the Ohio Municipal Joint Self-Insurance Pool for liability insurance coverage for the first year, to be changed to second, of the three-year contract beginning April 1st, 2021 and ratifying the same.
And basically what we talked about in our work session, this is the second year of the three-year contract. As it states for our insurance, there was a slight increase due to the high number of claims that had come through the insurance. Has to do with the increase, obviously, and we have to maintain insurance and they've been very good about any problems that we've had in rectifying those as well.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the title of ordinance 192021 to read second year of a three-year contract in lieu of first year of a three-year contract.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 192021 and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance 19 carries. Ordinance 20.
Mayor, I offer ordinance number 202021 for, for second and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
In ordinance authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the city of Macedonia's Director of Parks and Recreation.
Director Caddick?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be an opportunity for us to take a rather old piece of equipment, our Octane Seated Elliptical that has been deemed no longer worthy of repair based on long lifespan and a lot of maintenance that's been done to it over the years. It's no longer in a fixable position for us, so we look to simply dispose of this unit appropriately upon your approval. Thank you.
Any further discussion? What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance 202021 and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Mayor, a quick question. Knowing that this was a worthless piece of equipment, why did council have to vote to dispose of it?
By law, so we have to do this for anything.
I, I don't think so, because any, any worthless piece of equipment the city has, we'd have to have them vote on everything we throw away.
I assumed that Parks and Rec wanted to run this through council for auditing purposes, so to speak.
Well, again, I don't think.
Same with IT materials last meeting.
But I don't think it's legally necessary, just to clarify that.
Well, I think it's the transparency that we like to display and I always want to do that. So I'm not going to look at this as a bad thing, but whenever we do something like this, I think it's neat and clean to communicate to the public things that we're disposing of.
Well, then, it just becomes a gray line because when we're disposing of property like a scanned piece of paper, which is worthless, it's still.
It's up to the individual department heads in conjunction with the mayor's office and ultimately council can consider passage of the ordinance or not.
Okay, just wanted to.
More of that offline.
Just trying to figure out the, where the line is. Thank you.
Okay, ordinance number 20 carries. Ordinance number 21.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we waive the 48-hour rule and add ordinance number 212021 to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Being done, I'd like to offer ordinance number 202021 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective barding agreement for police dispatchers for the years 2020, 2021, and 2022 with the Ohio Patrolman Benevolent Association.
So essentially, this piece of legislation is the fourth of five contracts that I've been in negotiations with, which, with your approval tonight will pass. I could tell you that the employees in the dispatch center are very happy to see this come through tonight and have this finalized. And it speaks to the future for us because getting this done moves us forward and makes the employees happy. So I would appreciate a passage tonight if you would oblige. Any further discussion? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 212021, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21 carries. Thank you, council, for that. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I would like a motion to cancel the regular council meeting of April 8th, 2021, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Ventura, would you like to explain why?
Um, that coincides, that week coincides with Easter weekend and there are different weeks, the week before and the week after, where people go on vacation and take their spring break. And this way, nobody is put out by that and can make whatever plans with their families that they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move into the mayor's report. A couple of things this evening, we're going to be watching a couple of different videos, but I want to start with our volunteer appreciation slash recognition. This week will be the Board of Zoning and, I'm sorry, the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the folks that give their time to be on that are Kent Schelko, Matthew Ferraro, Richard Iafreda, Sam Pallato, Sue Metzl, and Mr. Godetti oversees it. So I thank them for their volunteering of time to be on that board. It's a lot of work and I can tell you that that one's the most difficult because when they're on that board, they have to make some difficult decisions and a lot of times they have to show some type of hardship to get something they need, like a fence or, or something of that nature. So it's not always an easy task and for folks that volunteer, that's a tough one and I thank them a lot for that. And then our restaurant of the week this week is Mr. Hero. They deal with a special this week, a tuna sandwich for $4.50. If you can patronize our local businesses, we definitely appreciate that. And I can tell you the individuals that run that are some great people and they appreciate your patronage. Next thing I want to go into, we're going to play a couple of videos for you. The first one's going to be some recognition for the fire department, so I will let the video play and I'll be quiet for a moment.
This evening, we're very blessed to have staff from University Hospitals Ahuja Medical Center here. They'd like to recognize one of our squads for a life-saving effort they had in February. At this time, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Goldstein and this patient, Steve Blackwell.
So I, we wanted to start with Steve telling his story about what he remembers from this evening.
Okay, what I remember is I was at work around the corner here and I was talking to a coworker who was down the hall in his office. And I guess my speech just went wacko. I kind of remember that. And he recognized it right away, ran down, got me situated, started getting disorientated. And the next thing I knew was, I remember waking up at Ahuja. And I don't remember any ambulance ride or anything, but.
All right, so we're going to have the, the paramedics fill in some of the gaps here. So I, I want to have a paramedic, Ty Lickie, maybe fill in some of the gaps here.
We got on scene around the corner, like you said, and it was textbook stroke symptoms that we noticed. We evaluated, we did our Cincinnati. We did a blood sugar just to make sure it wasn't something like that. Hurry up, did vitals and our four and 12 lead EKGs. And as soon as we did all that, we got him over on our cot and we pretty much head over to the hospital. On the way there, we started an IV route and did a couple more tests in the back. We did our meds in the back and called report, gave them the heads up that it was, you know, stroke alert and headed over to Ahuja.
So one of the critical pieces that, that he just mentioned is that he called us ahead of time. And they knew exactly what they were dealing with. They knew that they were dealing with a major stroke so that we could prepare ourselves to receive the patient. And one of the things that we drill all the time, you know, with our nurse manager and our assistant nurse manager and our stroke coordinator is the timing and that timing is so important and that we move our patients straight to CAT scan. And these guys deliver the patient straight to CAT scan and as soon as the patient hit the door, they were able to tell me exactly when his symptoms started. And that's so critical because I could know that, that he was not on any medications that would have prevented giving the clot buster TPA. They knew that he wasn't on any blood thinners. They knew exactly when he started to lose his speech so that I could know that I could safely deliver this medication. So while he was in CAT scan, we were getting medications prepared to give the TPA. And his wife arrived and was able to confirm that there were no contraindications to giving the TPA. And then we were also able to alert our colleagues that he is a candidate for a thrombectomy, which is where you actually suck out a blood clot from a major vessel. And Heather, our stroke coordinator, was really essential in getting the team mobilized because this required coordination of our interventional staff, our nursing staff, our nursing supervisor to bring people in to really help with your, with your outcome. So this is a big team mobilization. But it really, it all started with the prehospital crew. So we want to present this excellence in care to Macedonia, including our, our paramedics and I, I need your help.
Jeff Ty Lickie.
Jeff Ty Lickie.
Matt Kissig.
Brian Leffler.
And Brian Leffler. And I want to present this to the chief.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Dr. Spanner, you'd like to come up, please?
Sure. So I just want to say, this is called teamwork. This is the hospital, the physician, the providers, and the patient. Everybody got together here and they made the most amazing miracle. This man is standing. He may not have been standing. He may not have ever had the ability to speak again. But all the timing worked and the family got involved and the wife was an asset to this. So you pull all this together and this is why you provide the level of care that we're providing to this community. You've got a full paramedic crew. That's, that's not very common. But everybody who works here is a paramedic. Everybody provides the advanced care that you're seeing the results of today. So just, just an amazing job.
So just to touch on that a little bit, you know, we talk about our fire department and how amazing they are in the training. Dr. Spanner is an integral piece to that. He makes sure that the folks that work with us have this type of training so that, God forbid, you ever need them, they can save lives. I can tell you, it was, it was pretty awesome to see that gentleman standing there because of the efforts of our firefighters, EMS workers, to recognize what the problem was, get in touch with the hospital and save that man's life. So I don't think many people question our fire department, but if you do, that speaks to how amazing they are and how good of a job they do. And if you're ever in need, I can promise you, you're going to get the best care around if you, God forbid, need them. So I can only say thank you to the chief and his team because you guys are a group of amazing people that save lives. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We all, we all enjoy doing it. Thank you.
Very, very proud and it's amazing to see that and I hope people appreciate that. So my second video tonight, moving into the future, I, I've kind of touched on this in the past, but we have a, an issue with our, our service buildings. They are dated, they are in need of repair. I'm going to be looking to the future to build a new service building. Now, if you're thinking, how are we going to fund that? I would do this internally. I think I can find some funding mechanisms that I will be presenting to council in the near future. But if you look at these pictures, it'll illustrate the need that we have because these buildings have seen their useful life. A lot of these buildings have been retrofitted and just used because it's what we had. They weren't necessarily intended for the use. But as you look through these pictures, you can see that the, the four or five buildings that we operate out of are in desperate, desperate need of help. It's becoming a safety issue, so bad so that I had a structural engineer come out and they gave us the pass to operate in them, but stated that in the future, that's probably not going to be a likely thing to say that it's safe for people to go in and out of these buildings. So in the near future, we will be making a presentation to council and obviously the public to talk about what our needs are, how we're going to fund it and what we're, what we're going to be looking at in order to accommodate the needs of the, the service department in the future. So as we go through these pictures, if you have any questions, please ask, but again, it'll illustrate, you know, we, we've done the best we could with what we have up to this point, but they've reached their useful life. And we can only patch so many times before it becomes a problem and we're at the point of a problem.
Mayor, can you talk a little bit about what this building is that we're looking at here? This is pretty unique.
So these are the barns next to Longwood Manor. If you notice, the floors are dirt. When you store things, obviously that invites in mice and all kinds of other rodents and, and the moisture from the dirt will penetrate into the equipment. It'll rust it. There's a lot of problems within there. Again, the barns were never intended for us to use for that. We are just using them because it's what we have and we're making the best use of what we have. So when you see that and you see the dirt floors, it's pretty shocking. I, I don't know very many service departments that operate in buildings that have dirt floors, but we've, again, done the best we could we have. If you're looking here, these are the steel girders on the facility on Valley View Road. If you're looking here, these are the steel girders on the facility on Valley View Road. They are rusted so bad that if you put your hand on it, I put my hand on one of them and half of the steel girder came off. It's rather concerning to me. You'll see rotted outdoors and again, you know, we've patched these things as much as we possibly could, but it gets to the point of how much money do you want to put into a building before you have to just grin and bear it and say, we need something new to accommodate this? A lot of the buildings from wind damage in the past and everything else, it's definitely taken its toll on these buildings. You could see how we've patched a lot of that on there, retrofitted things and it's just coming to a point again of a different need and what we need to do moving forward. There you'll see our fuel pumps. We're close to having to replace those. The cost of replacing that fuel fueling station is a very, very high cost. It's another thing that we are considering and why we're bringing this to your attention today. Again, you'll see there patches in the building. It wasn't the intended use. We had problems and they patched them up. So it kind of illustrates the need that we have moving forward. Again, I have no intention of going to the voters. I feel that there's some funding mechanisms that we can do this without having to go to the voters to ask for it. So in the future, we'll be talking about that more. I have a plan that I'm working on with my team, so we'll be bringing that forward to you in the future. Are there any questions on that while we're on that topic? All right, hearing none, that pretty much completes what I have. Please don't drive distracted, put the cell phones down and drive your vehicle. I'll move into committee reports.
The Parks and Rec Commission met last Wednesday. We had a discussion with the resident about some of our concerns at Sugar Bush Park, which is something that we'll be looking into further. We got an update from Mr. Chaddick, pretty much what you heard in the last meeting. Also, we do have plans to, and this is not so much our group, but I know the Parks and Rec Department will be working on getting a survey out to see where the community stands on some stuff that that we might propose. So we look forward to looking to the Parks and Rec Department, working with them on that and getting that out to the community just to get more feedback. Our next meeting is April 21st, the day before the next council meeting, actually. It's it's a works out weird this year, this April. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That's perfect timing because you'll be fresh for your committee report, right? Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move into department report, department reports, starting with Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to start out by addressing the parking lot project that we have coming up in May. Director Gelati will be talking more about that during his update. However, I wanted to specifically address the facility closure that we have going on. It is a, at least a one-week facility closure. We are always doing an annual maintenance to the facility. Usually that happens in August. We are definitely moving that up to May. Week two of the closure is what we are investigating right now to try to see if we can come up with an alternative plan to still allow some people to come into the facility to get their exercise in. We will not have a final answer on that until late April, once we have a contractor on board to work on the parking lot project as we confer with them. Right now, though, we are investigating some backup plans that would hopefully allow for us to be able to do something during that second week. The second week of the construction project would be planned to be May 17th through 23rd. So I just wanted to provide some clarity there because I've been asked a couple of questions about that. So we are working on an alternative. We won't know until late April about the feasibility of that, though, so I just wanted to pass that on. I wanted to thank the community for coming out last Friday, a wonderful egg hunt that we hosted at Longwood Park. We were able to use a couple of the ball fields in the open area. We had a sold-out group for the event, a lot of kids having a lot of fun and getting a lot of candy. And Community Focus was out there doing a doing a special for us. So if you check out their social media, you can see a video of the event. And right now, as we look towards the future, April 24th, Saturday, April 24th, we are looking to do an Earth Day event, get together with some fitness activities that day, along with doing some park cleanup. So that's on the agenda. Please look out for more information coming on that. I've been asked a couple of questions regarding a community garage sale. The Parks and Rec Department is working to put some information together that will be released next month. And we plan for the community garage sale to take place May 15th and 16th, just so you guys have that information a little bit ahead of time. Right now, as we talked earlier, council, thank you for approving the disposal disposal of the seated elliptical. As part of that, we are looking through the equipment replacement plan that we worked on for the last several months. So we will be taking an eye towards some of the equipment we can get for the future as many pieces are aging out. We also now are in the process of replacing some of those pieces. The seated ellipticals are very important, especially to our senior community. Want to make sure we have a plan in place, get those replaced as they start to hit the end of end of the road as far as useful cardio time. So that's on our list right now. Field rentals coming up for the spring and summer for baseball, softball. We are absolutely packed right now. I'm excited to say we have a couple of spots left that people are trying to round up at the moment. And next week, we start our soccer program. I'm very excited to announce that for the first, we have the highest numbers that we've achieved in registration over the last three years. So even as we're coming through pandemic, our soccer numbers are the highest they've been in three years. So very excited for that. And right now, we have swim clinics coming up in April, mad science, chess, esports, Challenge Island are just a couple more of the programs that we have currently going on. And within the next week, we should see some information posted about our summer camp opportunities that we will have through the rec center. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
I'm guessing that was from me, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to apologize about the video. Looking it up, I see that on Apple, you're not able to share your your audio in Teams. So I learned something. The IT department closed 28 tickets since the last council meeting. Major highlights of projects that we've been working on are just completing the the new booking build out that Sergeant Clance was crucial in in helping out with some new equipment and a new setup in there for the for the jailer. Should be much easier for everyone involved and much more secure. We've also rolled out the second phase of training for the new finance software. The finance department's doing a great job of training. They know the new software at the back of their hand. They think it's going to be a big hit for everybody. Also completing the rollout of a new firewall and new VPN connectivity to work on some point-to-point VPN issues that we've been having. Those are the major projects. Looking forward to just completing the final demo for a new website vendor to figure out what direction we're going to go with the website. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Gelati.
Thank you, Mayor. Update on some bid openings coming up soon. Sealed bid opening for the road program will be tomorrow. And the bid opening for the rec center parking lot will be on April 2nd. So we will report back to council with the results of those bids. Once they're complete, rec center parking lot is of course scheduled to begin on May 10th. Guadalupe Church Project, as you guys will remember, that work was performed last fall, then suspended for the winter months. They will restart that work on April 5th. We expect it to take about four weeks to completion. At this point, consisting of replacing some storm sewers near the church's parking lot as well as installing the safety fence and planting the grass in the area around the pond. Neighboring residents will be informed of this schedule by mailing that will be going out soon if they haven't already received it. And last, Chief Ripley, that was a fantastic video that you guys had for us. So thank you to you and say thank you to your guys, please. I guess it makes me feel a little safer to live here in Macedonia. So thank you to the fire department. End of report, Mayor.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, for those watching, we have some weather coming in tonight, high winds. So if you can, fasten anything and everything down you have on your patio porch or plants or whatever. Supposed to be up to 60 mile an hour winds, I guess, and that should be happening very shortly. It's about eight o'clock now, so it should be hitting shortly. The rain just came through a little bit and the winds are going to follow. The other thing I have is the police department's been spending a lot of time trying to get our bank robbery suspect back from New York. One would assume when you have a bank robbery, the most difficult part of the deal would be determining who the perpetrator was. In this case, we determined who the suspect was within three or four days. And for the past three weeks-ish, we've been trying to get him and his vehicle back from the state of New York, which we've learned some things. Lots of help from the law department on that, Governor DeWine's office, and we're making progress. Today, we got the vehicle. Hopefully, hopefully, next week, we'll be able to bring the subject back. I don't know if Mark has anything to add on that, but that's where a lot of time has been spent, phone calls going back and forth.
Yeah, I would just add, Governor DeWine's office has been extremely helpful and cooperative in securing an extradition warrant. We're just currently waiting on the New York governor's office to actually issue it. Hopefully, that's going to be forthcoming in the next couple of days here and we can get this individual back.
Hopefully. That's all I have, Mayor.
Hopefully Governor Cuomo can expedite this and help us out. That'd be nice, huh? Okay, moving on to normally Director Nadevanch, who is on vacation. So today we have our service supervisor, Mr. Zernak.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. As we all know, it's orange barrel season and we have crews working on the side of the road. It would be helpful if you'd slow down, move over when we're working. Like to follow up on some projects. We're working on a drainage water line project at the ball fields at Longwood Park. As soon as we complete that project, we will be building restrooms for Veterans Memorial Park. Also, we are working on plowing salt damage and picking up litter and patching potholes. That's it.
Thank you. And just to touch on that too, anyone who's been on the fields at Longwood knows that that water tends to pool in between them. The service staff has worked very diligently and has done an amazing job and done it very quickly with the fortuitous weather that we've had to correct that problem. And I can tell you that now it is gone. So we, if we have any type of rain event and you're on the ball fields, we're not going to have a lake in the middle anymore and that makes me very happy. And I'm sure it makes the people that utilize the fields very happy too. So Mr. Zernak, thank you to your staff for that. We do appreciate it. All right, Chief Ripley. Chief Ripley, you there? Uh-oh.
Rose.
Well, we will move on to Director Smith then.
I don't know if it's my end or your end, Mayor, but you're all broken, so I hope you guys can hear me.
Oh, there you are.
Just to piggyback on what Chief Golden talked about.
Nope, it's it's your end. You keep going in and out.
Well, we'll move on to Mrs. Director Smith. Maybe we'll come back, see if it's working better here in a few minutes. How about that? Is that fair? Okay, Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR's busy. We met with the Hola, our payroll and HR provider last week and we addressed 38 separate issues with them and we resolved many of them. We're going to continue to meet with them biweekly until we can resolve some of the issues we're having because our ultimate goal is to get police and fire into our timekeeping process. I'm also currently working on putting our HR forms, handbook, all of our executed contracts, uploading them onto the iSolve system for access by our employees. And I will be doing some of that tomorrow morning with the Hola person. And HR is currently working to fill all of our seasonal maintenance positions and on top of our day-to-day. And Mayor, that's the end of my report.
All right, Chief Ripley, I can see you moving around. You want to give another shot here?
I'll try. I'm sorry about that. I don't know what's going on. So I'd like to piggyback on what Chief Golden spoke about the weather. If you watch me during the meeting, I keep turning around and the Weather Channel muted. Been terrible outbreak of tornadoes in Alabama. It potentially could come our way. It's probably going to stay south of us. But as John said, horrible winds are coming. I want to remind everyone, stay away from downed power lines. And if your power goes out, dispatch does not know when your power's going to come back on. You can call the Ohio Edison number. You can go online if you have that ability with no power and notify the power company and pay attention to your, whatever your media choice is for warnings and go to a safe place in your home if there's the report of a tornado in your area. The other thing is, I'd like to state that I'm very happy you passed the dispatcher's contract, contract, contrary to the title of that legislation, they also dispatched the fire department and we have about the best dispatchers around. They do a phenomenal job every day. They very much deserve this contract and I'm very happy to see it done. In the fire department, we're still working on the same projects we were last council meeting, so I'm not going to bore you with all that stuff. So and thank you for the kudos. The guys do a great job every day and it's very nice to get that recognition. They all really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And we're also fortunate this evening because our service staff is still on the winter shifts. They'll be coming off here very shortly, but if we have an incident this evening, they're ready to to get out there and try and help any way they can. So we're fortunate in that regard. Director Varis.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know what was longer, the service video or Jason's report, so I'll keep mine short. We got a notice from Rita that they are extending the due date from April 15th to May 17th. So our due date for our filing of the Macedonia refunds will be extended till August 16th. End of my report.
Thank you. Director Cadetti.
I have no report tonight, sir. Thank you.
We'll go into unfinished business. I want to add one thing here. I don't know if anyone saw and I'm probably going to steal Mrs. Tully's thunder, but Salvatore Perrin went down the states. Perrin went down the states in wrestling and killed it and won states. So I think that's amazing and he deserves a lot of recognition for that. So kudos to that young man because what he did there was amazing and we always want to recognize our high school kids. And sorry if you were going to say that, Mrs. Tully, but I had to throw that one in there.
Yep, I have it right here. He won the 182-pound Division One state championship. So no matter, first of all, getting to state is an accomplishment. We had another attendee who did that. As you saw the newspaper article, he was wearing the coach's old singlet for one of his matches. And it's nice to see that he brought home another title. You know, he also, he doesn't just do wrestling, he's also an awesome football player and I think he moves into track now. So very well-rounded and we congratulate him.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
I would just like to give some praise to Director Collins, who helped us in our last special meeting that we had last week. We needed video. We have council was actually able to come into council chambers and have our interviews live. We needed that to be on video and we talked to Director Collins in the morning about it and he got an awesome setup, got us set up on Teams, showed up and videoed the the meeting for us, made it live. It was great and he really went above and beyond and I just want to thank him for that. Thank you, Director Collins.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think it's also important to note that he's using his own equipment for that. So thank you for utilizing your own personal equipment. That's definitely appreciated because we don't have the means to do that with the equipment we have right now. So thank you for that, Director Collins. Any other unfinished business? Do we have any new business?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to R C 121 dot 22 G1 to discuss the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
So council will be having this executive session. Once they're done, we'll come back to here and do, at this point in time, there is no belief that we'll have any piece of legislation or discussion other than a German.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
We'll be back, Kyle.
I know. I'll be here.
Ms. Tully, you don't need me, do you?
No, no, it's just council. Thank you. Hey, R I C, everybody.
It's totally Google.
I call the meeting back to order. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Have a great night. Good night, Kyle.
Put bricks in your pockets tonight if you go outside.